Together at a future in person meeting. Um, I want to thank you so much for joining us today. Uh, my name is Gracie Semeninger and I'm the president of Downtown Council. And I want to remind everyone that we are recording this session today. And the recording will be available for our new Downtown Council podcast. And if you haven't already searched the Downtown Council on your podcast provider, please do so and hit subscribe. I'm going to give a brief overview of Downtown Council now. Uh, we are one of eight chamber councils and simply put, we care about the future of our city. We represent Jacksonville's business community, including major corporations, growing businesses and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that downtown and greater Jacksonville will thrive and prosper. Our meetings offer a brave space to discuss local topics and we look forward to bringing in different perspectives on what makes this city great and ways to make it better. We also pride ourselves on keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top tier speakers to our meetings. Today's speaker is Dr. Kimberly Allen, the CEO of 90 Forward, and she will discuss how to build and embrace an inclusive community. I know all of you are on the call to hear Dr. Allen speak, but I'd just like to make a few remarks. As you know, since July of last year, the Downtown Council has hosted a series of discussions, including Race and the Economic Effects of Jacksonville, Race and its Effects on Education, and Race and its Effects on Health Equity. Each panel was led by a group of local experts within these prospective areas. Jacksonville statistics related to people of color show disproportionate negative outcomes in each of these areas related to economics, education and health outcomes. These discussions and presentations, including today, I'm sure, continue to be a learning experience for me and the members of Downtown Council Board. I encourage each of you to do your own research and consider speaking with a close friend or colleague of color about any personal experiences they feel comfortable sharing. My last point is that I find it very serendipitous that Dr. Allen is with us the morning after Juneteenth was made a federal holiday. As you know, Juneteenth, which is tomorrow, June 19th, represents and commemorates the end of slavery in the United States. Thank you, Dr. Allen, for being here to help us remember this important moment. A few housekeeping items about Downtown Council. We plan to go back to in-person. Yay! As many of you know, we meet on the first and third Friday of every month. The first Friday will remain on Zoom and the third Friday will be an in-person livestream meeting. Our goal is to have this in place by our June 16th meeting, but we have some items we still need to sort out. Here's a question for the group. We are looking for a few Downtown Council members who are interested in staying virtual and making sure our hybrid meetings are meaningful for our online audience. If you have an interest in assisting with this, please let me know in the chat and I will follow up accordingly. Thanks so much. At this time, I would like to recognize all Downtown Council Board members as we all serve as volunteers, including myself. Will you please wave to our attendees this morning? This group of individuals would love your feedback. So as you hear or are aware of other events or programs that are coming up in Jacksonville, please let us know if you'd like that to be a part of our future programming. At this time, I will now recognize all new members to the Downtown Council. Laura Brown of Avondale Wealth Advisors, Liz McCoy of Friends of James Wolden Johnson Park, Larry McKinley of Team Logic IT of Northwest Jacksonville, Andrew Coughlin of Wounded Warrior Project, and Joe Hensley of the Hyatt Regency Jacksonville Riverfront. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Downtown Council Small Business Leader of the Year, Mr. Jim Leb, to introduce our spotlight speaker for today's meeting. Jim, take it away.
Good morning, everybody. I have the pleasure to introduce Rochelle Stoddard. She's a fellow SBLY. She's the owner-operator of Berman Brothers, which is a scrap metal recycling and metal sales facility. She's third generation in running this company. And I think the best thing that I get out of what she's done there is like she's been modernizing, modernizing in their culture there, both in like their business practices and who they hire and so forth. They also own Rubin Iron Works, which I just found out about because I do need some custom metal fabrication. But um, I'll just turn it over to her and she's going to tell um, about her, her business and herself in person.
It's a privilege to speak to all of you today. Um, and I look forward to meeting you in person. I'm also proud to be speaking and you know, under the umbrella of the same day that Dr. Allen will be presenting. And um, I'm going to make a caveat of what she's speaking to relevant to what I'm going to talk to you about today. And um, my, people ask me what I'm most proud of in my business, one of my greatest accomplishments. And off the top of my head, it's my dad has dementia, so allowing him to retire with confidence that our business, our 75-year-old business is in good hands. And the next thing would be caring for my employees while living with my values and teaching them and modeling my values. And then the biggest thing, as Jim spoke to, is transforming this very old, rough and tumble culture of to from us versus them to one of inclusivity as it pertains to a multi-generational business. While it's very much a work in progress, I've done some things to change the way we handle our people, the way we communicate with our people and our approach to rewarding our people. And the first thing really is to reward our people exclusively based on merit versus longevity or seniority. This has been a tough thing, considering I have employees that have worked for us for over 30 years and still look at me as the kid and like to tell me, your dad would do this or your grandpa would have done this. And while I try to honor their experience, I gently encourage them to try new things. This goes from the way we've overhauled our inventory management to the way we handled very nimble changes during COVID. And there's been a direct result in lowering our turnover. Our turnover is in single-digit numbers. And we've allowed employees of in to stay on with us into their seventies and embracing change and actually being really successful in learning new things. We've also changed by trying to recognize good attributes in people and promoting from within. My greatest success here has been recognizing a young man with learning disabilities who came to us with a really great attitude and a great work ethic. He was a guy that was mowing our grass. By recognizing his desire to grow, he is now our lead diesel mechanic and a complete rock star. We also have a success story with the guy that I kind of called him Big Ben because he was a guy with a black cloud around him all the time, like the Peanuts character. And he was in our warehouse doing the same thing, the same way every day for 13 years. We gave him an opportunity and he is now excelling as a salesperson in our, and he's doing an amazing job. When the old mentality was you had to have 18 years of experience, this guy is really showing them that just the desire to try new things, he's very capable. And this has resulted in tremendous improvement of loyalty, not only for this, these individuals, but other guys around him and girls. They've seen that there's opportunity for growth within our company. And the biggest success that we've had in transforming our us versus them culture is our safety program. Where it used to be a police state, we have a very dangerous environment, you know, and the mentality was do it because I said so. We have folks embracing our culture. And I can talk about this forever, but I know that I've got a limited time. And the greatest result that we've seen is we just got the award from OSHA designating us as a Sunshine State business. This is a big deal. This is a great source of pride and we've had zero incidents this year. I have to knock on wood when I say that. So you know, I'm happy to talk to anybody privately about learning what you guys have done to transform your culture. But I'm really proud of embracing people with different ideas, people with special needs, people from different backgrounds to, you know, to being great representatives and killer employees in my very own business. So thanks for having me today. I hope I'm under my time limit. And I'm happy to share my contact info for questions or any comments, guys. Thanks for having me.
Thank you so much, Rochelle. Um, you can just type your contact information in the chat if you'd like, so people can see it. But I can't wait to wander over there sometime and see, see all this in person. But anyway, at this point, I guess we're turning it over to, to Laura and she's going to take it, take it from here.
Thanks, Jen. Good morning, everyone. Happy Friday. As Gracie had mentioned, it is today's a very important day for us as a community. We're going to speak this morning about, we have a speak, we have two speakers, I guess, this morning, which has been wonderful. Thank you, Rochelle, so much. Also speaking to inclusivity and where we are as a community and what you're doing in the community to actually move forward. Um, and Dr. Kimberly Allen is going to speak to the same. Um, as I, as I start this though, I do want to quickly just for those that don't know what Juneteenth is or don't fully understand Juneteenth, I think it's important that we just kind of throw that out there in the beginning. So I'm going to read to you from the actual Juneteenth website, exactly what it, I'm going to read it verbatim, so these are not my words. "Today, Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and emphasizes education and achievement. It's a day, a week, and in some areas, a month marked with celebrations, guest speakers, picnics and family gatherings. It's a time for reflection and rejoicing. It's a time for assessment, self-improvement and the planning for the future. It's a growing popularity, its growing popularity signifies a level of maturity and dignity in Americans long overdue. In cities across the country, people of all races, nationalities and religions are joining hands to truthfully acknowledge a period in our history that shaped and continues to influence our society today. Since the ties to the conditions and experiences of others only, then can we make significant and lasting improvements in our society." And we genuinely believe when we were discussing this speaker for this morning, you know, we talked, as everyone knows, we try very hard to bring in speakers that educate us as well as give us all the, all the dirt on all the goodness going on in the city. But it was really important when we were looking at the calendar that we found an organization and a group that spoke to, spoke to Juneteenth. That's a very important, and now it's a national holiday. It's a very important day in America's history. And I think it's important that we, as a council and as a community, are not afraid to have these conversations, are not afraid to talk about, you know, the good, the bad and the ugly. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read you a little bit about our speaker so you can kind of know where she's coming from because it's important for you to understand that she absolutely understands Jacksonville and she is, in my opinion, the best one for the job. Dr. Kimberly Allen is a Jacksonville native, along with her husband and three children. She attended Sally B. Mathis Elementary, James Wolden Johnson Prep, and Stanton College Preparatory. So she is, she is all things Jacksonville, which is wonderful. She attended Florida State, which I won't hold against her, although I'm sure Gracie's very excited. And she graduated with an international back laureate diploma. I'm sorry, that's where she graduated from high school, from Florida State. She has two bachelor's degrees, one in psychology and family and child sciences, and a master's degree in family and child sciences, and also a PhD in human sciences. So she definitely understands humans, which is also really important for her role. She, upon returning to Jacksonville, she served as a research assistant and director of data and research for the Jacksonville Public Education Fund, which many of us know and love, we love us some J-PAC, where she assisted and led data collections and efforts along the Deval County School District, the City of Jacksonville and private foundations. Her bio is immense and I would love to read all of it, but we will run out of time because I know today is going to be really important. So I'm going to beg you to go to the website no matter what, but I'm going to go beg you to go to the website to learn more about Dr. Allen because she is just a magnificent woman and like I said, a treasure for, for the community here. She is going to speak today on quite a few of the initiatives and the mission of 90 Forward, which began back in 2015. It's a small group of friends that kind of started talking openly and challenging each other, supporting each other to build a more inclusive Jacksonville. So she's going to speak today to their mission, which is creating racial healing and equity through deep conversation and learning. So she's going to talk on that. I'm going to remind everyone that we will be taking questions at the end of the program. And then from that moving into breakout. So if you have questions, I ask you to please throw them up in the chat. This is, as we always say, it's a safe space, right? We're here to educate and learn and push. So please, if you have a question, don't be afraid to ask it. If you have feedback, don't be afraid to share it. We really just want everyone to feel, you know, this morning's a good morning for everyone. We're gonna, we're gonna learn some things. We're gonna learn how to be better people. We're gonna learn how to be a better community. So with that, I'm going to pass it on over to Dr. Allen. Good morning, Kim. Thank you so much for being here.
Good morning, Laura. Thank you for the invitation and good morning, everyone. Thanks so much for having me. Can everybody hear me okay? See my screen? We're all good? Perfect. So as Laura said, I'm, I'm Kim Allen and the, I think the most important thing for anybody to know about me in this moment is that I love my city. I was born and raised here. My family is from here. My husband's family is from here. And so I am interested in any and all things that mean that we get to make Jacksonville the best place on earth. So that's, that's always the angle I come from. Um, but I am the CEO of 90 Forward. And I have been in this role as the CEO since January of this year. And um, I was actually, I started getting involved with the organization back in 2016. A friend of mine invited me to the, the lunchtime conversations and I'll tell you all that the time then, six years ago or five years ago at this point, was not much different than a lot of things that we are seeing and experiencing and hearing or laser focused in on over this last year. There were unarmed black people that were being murdered, killed at the hands of, of police officers or community members. And there was a, a real serious heartache in that moment. And it was people who were coming together who, quite honestly, just wanted to talk, like talk through the emotions, talk through the feelings, talk through the thoughts. And so as we were talking, we knew that there are other folks who, who wanted to talk. And so that's further creation of some things that I'll talk about in a moment. But I was involved then as a member from 2016 to 2018. 2018, we became an official 501(c)(3) because we created some resources and tools that I'll share with you. And that, at that point, that's when I became the, you know, the, the president, if you will, for compliance purposes, but it was more so, it was for, you know, for that purpose, but it really grew from there. The, the desire in our community and the need in our community for us to just talk with each other. And so that really spurred, quite honestly, our, our vision and our mission, which Laura talked about, you know, we want to create racial healing and equity through conversations. We want to help people to build trusting relationships and we want to help folks move towards collective action. But I want to be very clear here that, you know, I think a lot of times in, in, in America, in society, there is a rush to the action, but I really encourage any and everybody to pause for some time to just talk with each other and learn from each other because naturally the action will come. But the action typically isn't the first step. It's the listening that has to happen and it's the self-work and the learning that has to happen. And to that end, we have a very, what some would consider outlandish, unattainable vision. And it's to help end racism so that all people thrive in our city. Racism at the institutional and systemic level, on down to the individual level, has really, and there's a lot of research that talks about this, has really detrimental effects on people and communities of color. We've explored that through a number of our conversations in community forums. It has come to light in our, you know, our conversations with different organizations and work groups. But the, and the question I always inevitably get is, is it possible to end racism? Are we really gonna end racism? That's a question we always get. And what I say to that is it, it probably won't end in my lifetime. It may not even end in my children's lifetime and it may never end, right? But does that mean that we shouldn't strive for that thing? You know, it's, should we not strive for it, right? We, if we say we want 100% of everybody in the city employed, how realistic is it? But does that mean you don't aim for it? Because you, in the process, you make yourself better. You make your community better and striving for better. So I, as outlandish as it may sound, I'm very firmly rooted in the idea that it is possible if we all just continue to take those steps. So I mentioned that when we, you know, transitioned in 2018 to a 501(c)(3), we created this tool in about 2017 that we launched in 2018 called the Race Card. And Gracie actually mentioned that she, in our prep call, that that she participated a little bit ago. And so that was the tool that was born out of our conversations in the Jesse Baldwin Pond Center downtown in Jacksonville. We would meet every other month on the third floor and we would ask each other questions like the ones that we created on these cards. And so if you have not been a part of the Race Cards conversations before, they are, it's literally a deck of cards and on each card is a discussion question. There are topical questions. So things like, how has the role of lynching in the Jim Crow era, how is that still relevant in present today? There are philosophical questions, things like how, you know, what role does fear play in people's understanding of race and racism? And then there are personal questions like, when did you become aware of your own racial identity? And so there are just over 40 questions. I mean, then there are some fill in the blank questions you can write in your own. But it really does help people to get the conversation started. And this really set us on the path that we're on, you know, fast forwarding now to 2021 with myself in place and other staff members in place to do this work on a full-time basis. Because that first event, I think we probably had 300 people show up to launch the Race Cards at the Jesse Baldwin Pond Center back in 2018. And so we have, you know, we have facilitators that help to move the conversation between the folks who are sitting at the table, or in this case, in this environment, in the Zoom breakout room to have conversations. And we really try and make sure that folks understand that this isn't a conversation that's going to solve the problems or the ills of racial injustice in the world. This is a starting place and people are on their journeys and we can't necessarily force people to move any more quickly than we want, you know, than, than they are ready to move. And some people will come along much later, but the point is to plant the seed, to start the conversation and keep the conversation going. So shortly after we got started and we launched the Race Cards, we had a very unique opportunity to partner with the Equal Justice Initiative over in Montgomery, Alabama. And that is Bryan Stevenson's work. If you, if you've read the book or seen the movie Just Mercy, that movie and book is about him. And he started this national museum and memorial that, that is attributed or is a contribution or commemoration of black people who were lynched in our country. And the museum, I don't know if any of you have ever been, but the museum and the story that it tells is, you know, how slavery basically, you know, the end of slavery led to this sort of Jim Crow era of racial terror in which black people were lynched. And lynched is not always in the sense that you think. It's not always a world in a tree. It is, you know, sometimes it is a, you know, execution gunshot to the head or a, you know, cutting of throat. It's, it can be very brutal or dragging on the back of a car, but it is, they have a very specific definition that they use. But it was, it was during the Jim Crow era and it really was intended to instill fear in the black community. And that fear, how that fear and how that sense of loss of control through slavery has led to what, what we now talk about as mass incarceration today. Jacksonville actually has seven inches, seven instances of lynchings documented with eight victims. And we have memorialized them through what's called a soil collection ceremony. So you see the jars there. We get the information, the research, we figure out where these events, the lynchings are said to have taken place. And we host a ceremony and it's a very sacred ceremony that we host and we have spoken word poets and artists and singers and people to really, we have, you know, prayers or meditations across different religious lines. And it really is an opportunity for us to take the soil from the ground and place it in a jar. And the idea is that at the, at the, for all we know, right, the blood of these victims still rests in that soil. And so we collect that soil and we've done five so far. We just completed one in May of 26th, uh, May 16th. So last month, we have two more left, one that'll take place this December. And the second memorial, excuse me, the last one will take place in February of next year. And so after we've collected the soil, we put up a historical marker. And we actually have our first historical marker going in this fall. And we're actually, you know, we're planning a silent walk because one of the victims, it was two victims at this particular instance, at Evergreen Cemetery on, on Main Street, not far from downtown. One of the victims was, and these were World War I veterans who were killed, black World War I veterans who were killed. Both of them were shot down by Evergreen Cemetery and one of the victims was unfortunately dragged from Evergreen Cemetery to what's now City Hall in James Wolden Johnson Park. So we're going to take that walk, a silent walk and have what we call daring circles along the way. So it's very heavy work, but we learn so much because we also get to understand the context that, in which, you know, Jacksonville was at that time. We also engage in equity advocacy. And so that means, you know, we, we were just, you know, helping out and doing advocacy work around the school name changes, which there were just, you know, six schools' names that were changed, that were named after Confederate soldiers. We took part in, in trying to advocate for that change. And, you know, the advocacy work continues. There's, you know, a lot in terms of the critical race theory that's coming out now. And, you know, the other things will come and we, we continue to keep our ears to the ground, if you will, to learn as much as we can and try to get out in front and, and show how certain policies, programs, initiatives or schools of thought can be problematic for communities of color. Or if they are really good programs, right? We want to highlight those and say, how can we get more of those? And then we also host community forums and we, we had one last month now. It's called, When Is It Safe to Be? And we actually had our first one last year. And we, we had it around, when is it safe to be? Um, and we, we had it around, when is it safe to be black? Because it was around the time that uh Ahmaud Arbery was uh killed. And also, um, I think within days, uh, George Floyd was also killed. And so we had this dialogue with the community. We brought folk together to, to have um uh conversations with each other and to learn from some experts in our community. And we're actually having another one um next week, When Is It Safe To Be Asian? As we try to explore what it looks like to explore, um, to support um our Asian American Pacific Islander community members here um in Jacksonville. And then the last thing that I don't have on here is we also have been publishing research around equity. Um, there has been um at this point, almost eighty years of research that talks about the disparities that exist in our city from education to health to housing to uh civic engagement to um, I mean, you name it, it, it covers a, a lot of areas. Um, and we're saying, we, we got enough data and information to act. Now is the time to act. And so we've been releasing those reports and the housing report is next. So because we are a, a large group, I think I saw like seventy something the last time I looked. I won't make you play the race cards now, but just so that you get a flavor of what you might see in a race cards conversation. I did just wanna bring up an option, um, a co- a question that we would ask in that moment. And it's how did your family and community influence your understanding of race? And so although we aren't gonna talk through this and have a race cards conversation, I would invite you all to, you know, pause for thirty seconds and really think through it. And I've done these conversations a number of times and I'll tell you um, that some things, you know, that, that come out are, you know, some folks didn't talk about race at all. Some folks talked about it all the time. Um, some folks didn't realize that there was, uh, you know, there were different types of people until college or until high school. There are some pivotal moments. Um, some folks were, grew up in communities that were always mixed. And so it was just, you know, we all just played together because we were children. Um, but there are also, you know, some things that, you know, make people really intimidated um in answering this question. And now what I would say is there are no wrong answers here. This is your lived experience. We're not ever here to judge your lived experience. Um, but pay attention to your body language. If you feel even, you know, if you feel your shoulders tensing up as you think about when you think about like, what is it that's giving you that feeling? Um, because there's something underneath there and, and we, that's the part we want you to explore when we're having these conversations. And we like to start off with something like this because it's your own personal experience. And we all got stories. We all have our personal experiences. So everybody has something to contribute there. And so as I wrap up, um, we often, you know, wanna figure out how we can get folks involved. And we are rolling out a number of ways and um I will also be sure to put some links in the chat um once I stop sharing my screen so that you all can um register if you're interested. Um, but we are always looking for volunteers. Nine O Forward started with volunteers and we want to keep it that way. Our volunteers are integral. I mean, just immensely important to the work we do. And we don't take it for granted when folks, um, when, because they are philanthropists, right? Philanthropists give their time as well. We don't wanna take uh for granted when philanthropists give us their time because that is the most limited resource of all. Um, so we do have four upcoming um volunteer orientations. So if you wanna learn about the organization um along the way, we will not um just send you out and have you facilitating race cards conversations and things without um giving you proper training. Or if you have another skill set that is useful, we are always looking for uh just people, uh, people who are passionate. And I'll tell you, this is, this is my personal hope always. If anytime anybody interacts with Nine O Forward, be it an organization that's inviting us in, be it someone just having coffee with me or someone that's talking to uh folks on my staff um or a volunteer, um, I never want you to leave the same way. Um, my sincere hope is that there is something that is sparked within you. Um, and we, we even for our volunteers, we even give, here's an implicit bias test. We don't, we don't get any results or anything from that, but we want you to learn about you too. Um, because in the only way that we're going to be transformative is if we transform ourselves. So just that little tidbit that I will drop in there. Um, purchase a deck of race cards on Amazon and host a conversation. We uh, we are always looking to host conversations. We will provide facilitators. Or if you have folks that you wanna get trained, we can train them to be facilitators and you have that resource in-house. Or you can just pick them up, read the instruction cards and start a conversation. And we always wanted it to be that simple. Um, attend an event. Um, I have on the next slide a couple of events that we have coming up. But um this, oh, actually tomorrow, this week has flown by. Tomorrow, we will be at the um, the Juneteenth Melanin Market um on East Side. So come out and check out uh our table, you know, purchase some merch or just stop by and say hi. Um, we have next week, I talked about the When Is It Safe To Be Asian? We have that conversation coming up. We have another community uh open to the public Race Cards Virtual Conversation. We hosted one last night. We'll have another one in July. Again, I'll post those dates for you. Uh, we're partnering with the Jewish Federation um to have a book club. And we say very clear, this is not your mother's book club. This is for folks who want to learn and grow um together. So the first book we're actually covering is So You Wanna Talk About Race. Um, and so if you are interested in, you know, joining that, that's coming up in the fall. So we have a lot of opportunities for folks to plug in. And if you feel so inclined, uh, make a donation. There is no amount to, uh, amount too small. And there's certainly not any amount that's too large either. Uh, and so we, you know, we invite folks, again, we, we feel that philanthropy is threefold. It's your time, it's your talent, it's your treasure. And in any way you feel um that you would like to invest, we would appreciate it. Um, and these are just a couple of flyers for a couple of the events that we're having. And I'll post, like I said, I'll post some more info in the chat for registration and things like that for some of the events that we are hosting. I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thanks, Cam. Um, you know, I, listening to you talk and, and kind of just, it's interesting to me. Like you gave a very wonderful like overview of everything, right? Realizing that this and your job and this organization and everything about it, so much more. Um, it's so much deeper than just the, what you, in the time slot that we gave you for you to be able to, to try to give us as much information as you could um about the organization and about yourself. So I, I appreciate that, you know, um, uh, to your point, I think that getting involved is gonna be a true way for everyone to really kind of understand Nine O Forward and, and what, how it's actually helping in the community and like what it means for our community. Um, uh, there are quite a few people that have asked some questions. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna kinda go through those questions.
Okay.
Um. If we don't get through all the questions, then I'll send you some later and we can
Okay.
send them back out. We'll do the best that we can to get through them this morning. Um, but there are, there are some good ones that have been thrown out there and I, I think that they'll help this, help this conversation a little bit more. Um, um, the uh, the person I'm gonna talk is from Gracie. Um, she asked, uh, Dr. Allen, can you share um additional information or even names of the founders? Who started the initial conversation? Who in twenty fifteen was like, alright, let's talk about this?
Yes, so um, one of the people was actually Tracy Towsey and she is now um our board chair. And there was a woman and she's not um here anymore. She left before I had a chance to meet her. Um, the other names of folks that as I came into the group were sort of that core group. In addition to Tracy was Amani Hope, uh, Hope McNath, uh, Sonny Gettinger, uh, Ronnie King, Daryl Willie. Those were folks who were sort of at that very core in the beginning. Alicia Summers
Oh, yes.
at the, at the heart of that group in the beginning.
Do you think, I mean, cause twenty fifteen honestly sounds like forever ago. And I realize that part of that might be because last year was very hectic and chaotic with the pandemic. But no matter what, I mean, I still feel like twenty fifteen was, I mean, that was six years ago, right? Do you feel that in six years, you, you know, it, so it took five and a half for there to actually be a position, right? Like for it to grow, that action that you talked about. Do you feel that those conversations over the six years have um progressed? Do you feel um that just within your group alone, that y'all better under, and it's not like to be like your group, but like within the group that you, that you talk about? Do you feel that that group um has a better understanding of where Jacksonville stays? To have a better understanding of conversations moving forward and where they need to go?
Yes, so I, I will answer that um yes and no at the same time. I think, um, as the people who are in the work, right, we're in it. And so I think we feel more enlightened, but we also at the same time are realizing that by the requests we get, that there are more people who are just starting this journey, which is exciting, right? We want them to start. Um, and so, but that part isn't like anything for us to be discouraged about. That makes me very hopeful, in fact, because um there are folks who are, even though they're just starting. There are folks who, who want to have this conversation. And, and I would say it's, it's the fact that we were having these conversations over those five years that we are even able to be where we are in the position we're in. Um, we were, for that whole five years, it was just us volunteering and saying, hey, who, who's a trained facilitator? We got a request to go over here. Um, but now we have the ability to be more proactive and intentional and helping groups to come together that wouldn't ordinarily come together before. And so it, it has been really organic, which is um probably the biggest part I appreciate.
Do you think that that, that that has helped, like helped the movement behind it? You know what I mean? Like it didn't feel forced. It wasn't like a, a demand per se on anybody to have a conversation. It wasn't like you have to do this, like be in the boardroom at nine AM on Thursday morning because we've gotta talk about this and we've gotta figure out the solution right now. Like, do you
Right.
that, okay, okay.
And honestly, I think that, I think in general, that's our nature. Like I never want to force anybody to do anything. Um, I, I want you to be curious, right? And in some instances, right, folks are opening this up to their membership or their, their colleagues and they say, well, should we make this mandatory? And my answer is always no. Um, everybody isn't ready. And some people are gonna see, oh, we're gonna play the race cards and they're gonna get really skeptical and they're gonna bow out immediately, right?
Sure.
But what I always say is, like, we don't have to be the face. If we give the folks, the twenty people who want to come and have the conversation, they'll go in there, tell their colleagues about it and it'll grow from there. And that's the organic nature of it.
That kinda goes into, uh, John Bryan asked a question. He said, people move through stages as they go from unaware of a cause to learning more about it and then finally getting passionate and actively supporting it. Um, have you seen more people on that journey? Like you, you talked about how your journey started in twenty fifteen and there's been a lot of events in twenty twenty, right? So have you seen more people on that journey now that it is more universally known and there's actually more conversation?
Absolutely.
People with a journey. So you are seeing an increase?
Yes, absolutely. I, I'm not opposed to when you get on the, on the train. I just want you to get on it. Like it's moving. Um, there are folks who are on it, right? There are some, and, and I use this analogy all the time, but like there are some folks who are just standing on the dock and they're you know, they don't know what, you know, they see the train moving by. And then there are some folks who are willing to reach their hand out. And so what we said is, we always wanna be the people on the train who will reach our hands out for the folks who see it moving and, and say, okay, I wanna get on, whenever that is, right? Whenever that is. Some people will never get on that train and that's okay too. Um, but for those who are, you know, starting to kinda jog alongside and then they're ready to reach their hands out, we're there to, to pull them on.
That is a beautiful analogy. I got wavy through your presentation. I just put tears in my eyes. That's very, it's very sweet, wonderful. Uh, you know, cause it, it's an ever-moving target, like, like that, you know, when you say that, I think of like, cause this isn't a sta, it's not a stationary, it's not a stagnant uh topic and it changes every single day um in, based on what's happening even within our own city, our own state, our own country, our own, you know, the nation, the world, everything, right? Like
Right.
ever-changing and there's so many variables. It's not like, nope, this is the black and white. Let's just hang here and let's just do this.
Mm-hmm.
Can you comment on the difference between being race-conscious and being a racist? Cause there's a difference. Let's talk about this. That's Allen-less, which I love, Allen. Of course, Allen's like, let's throw this one out there. I love it. Thanks, Al.
That's a great one. So I think racist um is with malintention. And I think, because I think there is in um will, a willful ignorant portion of being racist um that allows you to mistreat people or treat people uh, you know, negatively because of how they present, you know, as their race or ethnicity. But race-conscious is, I think, what we all should be, right? Like we should all be aware that people are of different races and ethnicities because I think that's an acknowledgement of their culture, of the ideas that they may bring to the table. And I, you know, and I've put race consciousness up against colorblindness more so than race consciousness up against uh racist. Um, because there is the idea or there, there was and still is the idea that we should be colorblind and we should
I've heard that before, yeah.
And, and folks have said, you know, like, oh, I, I, you know, I am colorblind. We, we were taught to be colorblind. But like, no, because then that ignores, you know, part of the history that I present with. We are all presenting with some sort of history in any space that we occupy. And so being race-conscious, I think, will lead to better outcomes. And it will make you a little bit more sensitive and a little bit more celebratory and all of those things at the same time.
You brought up celebratory. One of the reasons I read directly from the Juneteenth website was because it did, it talked about, it's not just like looking at, it's not, it's not a mourning, it's not, you know, it's not a, we're not looking at racism and, and some of the horribleness due to specifically slavery that occurred, so much celebrating the moving forward. Like how do we move forward? We gotta move forward. Let's celebrate. Let's, you know, let's, let's look at it. So for you to bring up celebration, that just kinda ties into that. And I, 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 I tend to look at positives, right? Like that's something that I tend to try to do. Um, and there's, uh, there's a lot of negativity around. Clearly, there's a lot of negativity around um not being inclusive and, and um whatnot. But it seems that there is a movement that is more than just talk. Like, and I say that's funny because like you talk about conversations, which your conversations are just talk, but they're not. They are actually movement. It's not just sitting around a table, you know, with your girlfriends or your guy friends or your friends in general and talking and then like nothing happening, like where you just have a flippant thirty-minute conversation and then you move on and you don't really, you don't think about it. It's, there's movement behind just talking, which is, which is a different approach, I think, than, than a lot of people talk. And we talk about this all the time. There's a lot of people who talk, but don't do anything. So it's nice when people actually have actions behind their words. So there's that. Okay, so let's, we um are going to, let's, this one, this one's good. So this is from Nicole Hand. Uh, what are your thoughts on a holistic approach to ending racism? For example, we now have recognition of Juneteenth, but debate teaching CRT in schools. How do we make progress in all parts of our history and culture?
Oh, that is such a loaded question and, and it's a great question for sure. Um, what I am learning very quickly is um and this is probably gonna sound kinda cynical, but I, I wanna, I wanna be delicate here um in that what's happening on the federal level, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is a little bit different than what's happening on the state level. That's part A. Uh, but part B is um sometimes, and this is just me being really honest, doll. Sometimes we have the tendency to um do things that feel good in the moment. It's a nugget, right? And you cling to that nugget and it buys you some time before having to make the next big step, right?
Sure.
Um, and so I, I'm grateful that we've, that we're celebrating Juneteenth, that it's a federal holiday. What concerns me though is how it will become commercialized eventually.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, it'll be the thing to do um instead of really it pausing and being a reflective time. Um, and at the same time, if, if we're acknowledging Juneteenth, um, that is uh, that is a fact, right? So a, a little bit nuanced because Juneteenth, and I just learned this from a, a brilliant man named So a little bit nuanced because Juneteenth, and I just learned this from a brilliant man named Joe Tillman. Um, that that Juneteenth is the day that we celebrate, but there are actually things that happened like a year and a half before. And folks were all, you know, already knew that they were free.
Juneteenth was the last, right, it was the last.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
That's right. And so, but, but how do we teach that history? That's not critical race theory. Um, uh, history in in critical race theory, Chris, critical race theory is a lens through which you critique. Um, you know, the policies and things that are in place. Um, and that's typically a college level course anyway, that, you know, we're talking about that. But at the core of what we're talking about in K D twelve is how do we teach an inclusive history that includes the facts? And so that might involve bringing in uh primary resources as in people who, you know, have lived through some events. Um, our school district has an amazing African American history task force of people who are pulling resources together. Um, to share the history, to share the local history in a way uh that is, that is truthful. It is humble. It is also celebratory to your point, Laura. There are a lot of contributions that. Um, that Black people in our city have have made to the greatness. David Johnson's birthday was just yesterday.
I know, I know.
So there, you know, there's greatness all around us, but there, there is um. There is a conflation of teaching history and teaching the facts of what happened. And uh, critical race theory, which is a win, a lens through which we use to critique how uh our season things were made.
Well, for y'all then, from like, I mean, like, because you're involved with Duval County and you said you do some things. What is it? But this was, this was a question that I had it like in the back of my head, like, where do we see you, right? So do we see you in the school system? Do we see you? Part of that conversation, is it, you know, how does that tie in?
So tell me about what you mean when you see, see like me, Kim?
Like, like, no, like, not, well, yeah. Well, yeah, I know where to see you, but like, you know, like, where do I see nine and four? Like, if I'm a parent, let's say my kids in uh in Duval County or my kids at the school that he's in, right? Like, will I see nine and four on campus at school? Will I see it in an after school program? You know, like, where do I see you?
So no, not at the moment, right? Now we are just serving on that district task force.
Okay.
And advocating where we can. Um, there was some backlash even before, you know, with some other groups who have tried to come on campuses and do. Some of that work. And so uh, we're, we're taking a very delicate approach and. I would, you know, let them invite us in. Um, if that is, is where we go. But we work with um a small group of students outside of school. It's through their parents with permission. So no, we're not on campuses. Um, uh, and actually One Jax has a really great uh metro town uh program that is on campuses. And you know, again, it's that relationship and they've been invited in. We're new. We, we still got some, some ground.
Yeah, sometimes. I know, I just. Well, because someone else also asked this question and I think it's a good question, you know, because there. There are volunteer hours that are required in most schools now, like it, can high schoolers? Volunteer with nine and four as part of their community service? That's from Curtis Phelps, and I think it's a great question. My son has to do community service hours. Like, can he volunteer? With nine and four and then, and to be able to be immersed in what's going on with you guys. Um, as, and then, you know, also bring that conversation back to his friends who are on.
Absolutely. Um, we, we have volunteer orientation and like I said, I'll put that in the chat, but.
Great.
Um, as long as there, we have parents consented. And you know, if there are, because we're getting ready to go back to in things being in person, if there's transportation and. All of those things, we absolutely encourage uh students to participate. Um, because honestly, the students are the next generation of leaders and I mean that very sincerely because they. Have been on the front lines of advocacy and, you know, et cetera. So we want to try and build them up as much as we can.
Um, perfect, because I'm going to get that information from you. And so is Curtis, clearly. Um, let's see, this one I think is interesting and I I think that it ties to, right? Like, we've kind of put a little bit of an emphasis on it's June, you know, Juneteenth and all of that, but. And you approached this by the fact that you're going to have um a discussion around, you know, a different population. So if you can maybe explain. Uh, Betsy wanted to note, is your group discuss prejudices and systemic bias against Native Americans and other ethnic groups?
So that is an area that we are trying to explore more. And if I'm honest, you know, I have my own, a lot of blind spots there. I have a lot of blind spots. In a lot of areas. And so what I have tried to do is identify people from that population. That can help to educate me and then give them the platform to share. And so. If there is an opportunity for me to meet with a group of Native Americans or Indigenous people, I would. Run right now at the chance to do that. And I mean, that's just me being very honest and admitting my own blind spots. Um, because we all have them. And so if, if, if there is a way for somebody to make that connection. I would love to do it and I would love to give them the floor to, you know. To start, that's absolutely right. And that's exactly how we started with. So next week we're having our when is it safe to be Asian? Uh, from, we had a when is it safe to be and we had Asian representation, but we said, hey, we need to go.
Nice.
Deeper on these topics. Help us curate a group of people that would. Hope to further the conversation. And so, you know, I, I have no problem with, with like, hey, I'm not the expert. Let's bring somebody else in who is.
That's good to know. And I think that's a point that we'll make sure to continue to push because, you know, uh, clearly it's. It's more than just, you know, it's more than just a, a, a person of color or a person that, you know, like, there's all sorts of.
That's right.
Pride issues.
That's right.
Okay. Well, this one's, so this, this is going to be my last question. I'm going to move into breakouts, right? So, and this one I think is fun. And I think it's a good question because we want, we all, we all want to know this answer.
Okay.
Um, um, the race cards, do you have plans to make a virtual version? Or do it via Zoom or like do it that way? There are still so many people that are not. Able to go back in person or don't have the time to go to an in-person event. Is there a way to make a virtual event of the race cards?
So all of our events have been virtual since um last May. Um, and uh, it is, the one that we're having in July is virtual. We, we don't, I don't think we don't, we don't ever plan to ever completely go away from virtual. That's actually one of the benefits that we've seen is that folks can hop on. And, you know, it makes it very convenient.
We've experienced the same, yeah, we've experienced the same.
To have it. But I'll let you in on a little secret. Um, and this is with the help of Mayo Clinic. Uh, we actually, July first, are launching a, uh, an app for the race card.
That's exciting.
Yeah, we're really excited about that. It, you know, uh, we worked with some developers at Black Diamond.
Yeah.
And they took the race cards, like, and we, we're still doing physical decks. We're not getting rid of our physical decks. But they turned the race cards into an app and it is fabulous.
Congratulations. That's huge for you guys. That's, that's really exciting. Awesome. So July first, we will, we are all logged in. Um, what's up? Because it's nine o'clock and we're always so, so about being on time. Um, I just, Kim, I want to thank you so much. Um, you know, I, we talked about why it was important for you to come. We would love to continue. You talked about how we can get involved. We're going to make sure everyone knows how we can get involved. We would love for you to come be part of our conversations that are more regular basis. Um, you know, we are, like Gracie had mentioned, we are going to go back to some hybrid. We're going to do some in-person stuff, which would love for you to actually attend. So we can have some conversations with you as well. Um, and and I just, I really thank you so much for, for being a part of this and letting, you know, kind of letting us pick your brain some as well. Um, I am going to shoot this over to Gracie. She's going to actually give us a breakout question. A topic, which we don't normally do, but she's going to, she's going to help facilitate a conversation because that's what this is all about this morning. So, uh, Dr. Allen, Kim, thank you so much. I appreciate you. And Gracie, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you for the invitation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you, Dr. Allen. Wow, um. You said something earlier, just like listen to your body, uh, you know, as you're having these conversations. And I think we shared. A lot of um pretty heavy information today or just a lot of thought provoking um things. And so I'm just grateful for you. To, to be able to share that and speak so openly and honestly about, um, you know, race and racism in Jacksonville. So thank you for, for being a leader in that. Um, and so I'm, I'm, I'm excited. I don't know if excited is the right word, but I look forward to having breakouts. For those of you that are able to stay on the call for the next fifteen minutes, we'll probably do breakouts for ten. Um, but uh, earlier in the presentation, Dr. Allen um put up a slide uh for one of the race cards. And the question was, how did your family and community influence your understanding of race? And so as we go into breakout sessions today, I'm going to ask um Kathy Sutton with the chamber to put us into rooms. But as we enter those, I would love us to, to come in with that lens and have discussions uh with, with members of, of the downtown council meeting this morning on. On what your, what your answer is to that question. How did your family and community influence your understanding of race? So um, hang tight for those of you that are able to stay on for the next ten, fifteen minutes and we look.